आदलाई रबना दिरिलीला भूरा सदना अमीन हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया नेवो मेरि रिबिला भूरा मना दिरिलीला भना दिरिलीला भूला सदना मना अमीन सोत्रम 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 सोत्र अमीन अमीन उन्हें गुणमाक करा
He heals you
निन्नो बागुचे इश्वनाड़ उन्हें व्याधिये गुणमाक करा
He heals your sickness
नी व्याधिनी बागुचे इश्वनाड़ व्याधियुला युद्ध तिल अपिशयकम इरंगट्टम
May the anointing this is the place where you have sickness
व्याधियक का बागमला अभिषयकम तिगनो देवनुन्हा गुणमाक करा
God heals you
देवड़नुन्हा बागुचे इश्वनाड़ एल्ला प्रथनगला मात्करा
He changes all your problems
नी समस्या तिस्तुमें इश्वनाड़ अमीन अमीन हल्ले लिया रबना तिबिला बाला भूरा मना दिनिलीला भूरा मना दिरा बना दिरा ओरवरुम ओरवरुम मौनमाय रुकाद
No one should be silenced
एवकरु मौनमुकाउंडा मधु हाँ एल्ला ऊर्यरगलुम वॉलंटियर्स एल्लरुम आवील नरंपुंगल
All the servants of God and volunteers get filled in the spirit
ताइवा सेवुकुल अंदरु वॉलंटियर्स अंदरु आत्मलंप बढ़ोड़ी एल्लरु ओरमन पड़ूंगल
Let all of us be of one accord
अंदरुम एकमुका मारुद आवियानवर परिया कार्यंगल चय्यत
May the spirit of the Lord do great things
आत्मदेवड़ु गप्पा कार्यमुन चइनिकाक अमीन 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 इदो उन्हें थोड़करा
Behold he touches you
निन्नो आयना मुट्टुचुनाड़ उन्हें व्याधिये गुणमाक करा
He heals your sickness
नी व्याधिनी बागुचे इश्वनाड़ उन्हें विन्नपत्ता देवन कैटा
Lord has heard your supplication
नीयक याचना देवड़ आलकेचिनाड़ विन्नपत्ता कैठपटी अपिशयकते अनपकरा
And he sends for the anointing according to your supplication
नी याचना प्रकारमुका अभिषयक पबुचुनाड़ हल्ले लिया रबा लादलाई रबा लादराई रबा तो बाला तिरिलीला भूरा रबना अमीन हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया रबा लादलाई रबा अमीन 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 अपर अपर हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया हल्ले लिया उन्हें व्याधिये छोटु पारूंगल व्याधिलीरुद्दु देवन बिदुदिले संदुविक्ता
Try touching the place where you had sickness The Lord has already given you deliverance from his sickness
व्याधिकला स्थलान चुडंडी देवड़ मी व्याधि बागुचे इश्वनाड़ इबो तुनकु व्याधि इल्ल
Now you have no sickness anymore
नीकु व्याधि कमितद लेद इदो सात्तान तोट्टिविता
Behold Satan has got defeated
सात्तानु वडिपयान
Yes, जयत Jesus has overcome
Yes, चय्यचनो वेंट बनाल एल्लारी एल्यूम्पी निल्लूंगल
Shall we all stand up?
लेंदर लेचिले पर्दा एल्लारी एल्यूम्पी आवील नरंपुंगल
Shall we all stand up and get filled in the spirit?
आत्मलंप बढ़ोड़ी लेचिले पर्दा पक्कतिल वॉलंटियर्स निंदुकंडे रुकरार
Volunteers are standing by your side
वॉलंटियर्स मी प्रक्कनिल्ला बन्न इगुन्न पायपड़ाद
You don't be afraid
पायपड़ा मधु उन्हें वाचल्लाम पॉकेटिल पोट्टुकुड़ूंग
Put your watches out in your pocket
नी वाच पॉकेटले बस्कुड़ नल्ला सरीरत बिट्टुकुड़ूंग
Heal your body
सरीरानी वधिलिपट्टुड़ी अमीन द वल्लमे अभिषयकम इरंका पोकुद
Behold a mighty anointing is going to descend
शक्तिमतम अभिषयकम तिग्बावचुनाड़ी उन्हें आवील तूक्की बीसिनाल बीसट्ट
I will throw you about in the spirit if he wants
आत्मलो मी सरीरानी विस्तरिवस्ते विस्तरिवेग अन्यवड़ी
Oh send the fire down now Lord send the fire down now Oh send the fire down now Lord send the fire down now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now Oh send the fire down now Lord send the fire down now
या पाया पाया
Send the fire down now
अमीन
Lord send the fire down now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now Send the fire down now Lord send the fire down now Oh send the fire down now Lord send the fire down now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now Let fire burn today, fire lead the way, send, send now
अमीन 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 अप्पड़िये सरीरत बिट्टुकुड़ूंग
Heal your body, heal your body
सरीरानी स्वच्छेका वधिलिपट्टुड़ी पायपड़ाद
Don't be afraid, don't be afraid
पायपड़ा मधु वॉलंटियर्स निंदुकंडे रुकरार
Volunteers are standing
वॉलंटियर्स मत्यालो निलबड़ियुनार उनकु देवी सहिवा
He shall help you
नीकु सहाय मुच्चय्यो अभिषयकम पत्तुकोलूंग
Receive the anointing
अभिषयकम पंदुड़ी वल्लमे न अभिषयकम पत्तुकोलूंग
Receive a powerful anointing
शक्तिमतम अभिषयकानी पंदुड़ी निरैवान अभिषयकम पत्तुकोलूंग
Receive the fullness of the anointing
निंदाइन अभिषयकानी पंदुड़ी
अमीन 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 There is a rest through the anointing
अभिषयकतिल मुलमागे उरिलिपार्गल उंड अभिषयकम दारा ओको विस्रांति उन्नदी
The Holy Spirit is now, for the sins you have repented of The Holy Spirit is now mortifying all those things that Sins that try to work in your body, in your thoughts
नींगल एंदेंद पावंगल कागम मनस्तावपट्टी परुद्दु मनंतरुमुनीरिग्लो परसुत आवियानवर उंगलुकुल क्रियेसैद अंदे सरीरतिलुम उंगलुडे मनतिलुम क्रियेसैकिरदान अंदे मामसुतिन क्रियेगले अडिक्युमुनी आय क्रियेसैदुकुंडे रुकद नीर एटुवंडी पापमल कोडुकु पच्चा तपपाडी देवन वाइपु तिरिगिउनाडो आयका पापमल अन्नीटु निमित्तम
Whatever sin you want to be put to death You claim the anointing for that particular sin
एंदेंद पावत्यल्लाम नींगल इंदेक्यादरकोर मर्नते उन्नाक्कवेंदुमेंद निनैक्रीरिग्लो अंदेंद पावत्यकाले नींगल अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग एयका पापमल जयिंचकोरी उनाडो आयका पापमल निमित्तम अभिषयकमुनु पंदुकनुड़ी
When you have filled enough, you will feel a rest
नींगल निरैवान अभिषयकतिल निरम्बुबाद अंदे इलैपार्गल उंगलुकुल उनरुवीर निंदाइन अभिषयकमुनु पंदुकनुड़ो अभिषयकम मेला विस्रांति कलगत रहिचुनादी
Receive, receive that anointing Mortified, put to death, that very sin That very sin in your thoughts, that very sin in your body
उंगलुड़िये मनतिलुम उंगलुड़िये सरीरतिलुम क्रियेसैकिरदान चैदुकंडे रुद अंदे पावत्य अडिक्युमुनी आय अदरकोर मननते उन्नाक्कुमुनी आय अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग नी मनसुला मी सरीरमला क्रियच्चना उन्हें पापमल जयिंचनाट्लुक ओक अभिषयकमुनु पंदुकनुड़ी
Believe, this is what the word of God says Believe, it is happening right now
इदोदान कथ्युड़िया वात्तई इदे नींगल विश्वासीगल अदि इबो इदे उंगलुकुल नड़ेबरुकद इदे देवनका माता नीर विचोदचुड़ी इबोला माता मेला नर्मर चुनादी
Hallelujah Sometimes, the images of the sins which you once committed is coming back to you
सिलनेरंगलिल ओरिकालतिल नींगल सैदुकुंडरदान पावत्युड़िये काचिगल उंगलुडे मनतिल तिरुम्ब तिरुम्ब उदितुकुंडरकल ओक वेलाम यका जीवितल्ला करिचना कालमला चैसनाट्लुक पापमलो अवकम मीत मुंदुकाक दृष्टमुका मीत चोच्चो तिरिगचुनाड़
You have already repented
नींगल एरकेवे अदकाग मनस्तावपट्टी मनंतरुमिविट्टीरिग तानीमितम पच्चा तपाडी मीर मारमान्चु पंदुयुनाड
Those flames and those things are coming to your thoughts right The devil is trying to bring it back to your thoughts
अंदे तिरैबड़ंगलुम अंदे मच्च कार्यंगलिन काचिगलुम पिसासे मरुबड़ी मरुबड़ी मागाद उंगलुड़िये सिन्दै मंडलतुकुल कंडुवराव आयका दृष्टमुला आयका सिनमाल बिदिचपट्टिन अभिपापमलो नी मनसुला निकी सात्तान तिस्कोचुनाट्लुक चोटिवकुड़ी
You say, "In the truth of baptism, I am dead to sin"
तानी ज्ञानस्थान सत्यतिल नान पावत्यकु मरिते एंड नींगल उंगल वायनाल सुल्लुग भाटीस असत्यमला पापमलुको चनिपयन चोटी
I am dead to sin
नान पावत्यकु मरिते नीर पापमलुक चनिपयन
I am alive unto God through Jesus Christ
नान कृष्ट यस्वीन मुलमाय देवन केंद प्रेतिरुकरे कृष्ट यत्तु मुलमुका देवनलान निजिंच चुनान
Now, receive that anointing
इबो दान अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग इबोला अभिषयकमुनु पंदुकनुड़ी
All those things are being consumed by the fire of the Holy Spirit
अप्पड़िबंड कार्यंगलल्लाम परसुत आवीन अखिनीनाल सुट्टेरिक्य पड़करद अटुवंडी कार्यमलान मी पच्चुद आत्म अभिषयकेन्दर काचुमें बढ़चुनावी
Your spirit is being purified
उंगलुड़िये मनते उंगलुड़िये आवी अदि तुईमयाक्क पड़करद नी मनसुला मी गुरुद्वाला पापमलो काचुमें बढ़चुनावी
He is the Lord, who sanctifies you
अवर उंगलै परिसुत्तमाक करा कथ्य नान परिसुत्तम पट्टु देवुन
Amen, receive, receive that anointing
अंदा अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग पेचुकलूंग पंदुकनुड़ी
He's purifying you
अवर उंगलै परिसुत्तमाकिकुंड तुईमयाकिकुंडरुकद नीमुन परिसुत्तम पच्चुचुनाड
Hallelujah, hallelujah As you surrender yourself to God I am dead to sin, I'm alive unto God Through Jesus Christ, my members have surrendered to do the will of God
नींगल देवनुक उंगलै ओपुकोडुत नान पावत्यकु मरिते नान कृष्ट यस्वीन मुलमाय देवन केंद प्रेतिरुकरे एनुड़िये सरीरतिन अवयवंगल देवुड़िये सित्तम सैयुमुनी आय प्रेतिरुकरद एंड नींगल ओपुकोडुकुम्बोल्दान नीर पापमलुक चनिपयनान कृष्ट यत्तुनंदरुन सजीवनुका जीविंचुनान नीयका सरीरमलो देवनुके सजीव यागमु देवनु चित्तमलोक अपकिंचुकुन
On the offering that is offered on the altar The power of God, fire will come down
बलिबिरजिल मेल वैकपड़करदान अदि बोली पोरुरिल मेल कथ्युड़िया अखिनी देवुड़िया वल्लवाय दिरैकी वरुम बलिपीटम मी अपकिचुचुनाड़ बलिपचु
Now, all your members are coming Under the power of the Holy Spirit, under the grace of God
इबो दु उंगलुड़िये सरीरतिन अवयवंगल अनैत्तुम परिसुत्तमावीन वल्लम इंकिल वरुकरद देवक कृपय इंकिल कोडुवरा पड़करद नीयका सरीरम यमलान मी पच्चुद आत्म आदिनमलोक चुचुनावी देवनका कृपतियत निप्पा बढ़चुनावी
God will prevail No more disobedience, no more lust can prevail to your members
देवन उंगलुड़िये सरीरतिन अवयवंगल मुलमाय चैप्पर इच्छयो मच्चदान किल्पड़ि अमीन सुभावमो उंगलुड़िये अवयवतिर्मुलमाय इनी चैक्क मुड़याद नीव देवनक आत्मत्यत जयिंचुनावो इक्के पितन नी सरीरमलो आत्मुकुड़ जयिंचलेद
The power of God is transforming you, every member right now
देवुड़िया वल्लमाय आद उंगलै इबो दे मरुब पड़ति कोडरुकद उंगलुड़िया वोप्पर अवयवत्युम इबो दे मरुब पड़ति कोडरुकद नीयका सरीरम अवयवंगलो देवुड़िया आत्म रूपांतर पच्चुचुनादी
It is the work of the Holy Spirit
इदे परिसुत्तम आवियानवरुड़िया क्रिय इदे पच्चुद आत्म अभिषय
Oh, speak in tongues, speak in tongues
अन्य अभाशयलिल पेसुंग अन्य अभाशयलिल पेसुंग
Now, your members that are yielded to do the will of God
इबो दे देवुड़िये सित्तते सैयुमुनी आय अर्पणिक्क पड़दान उंगलुड़िये सरीरतिन अवयवंगल इबोडुम देवनु चित्तमु चैय्यदान के अर्पिंगचुकुन निम्यका सरीरम एक अवयवमुलन
It is now filled with the power of God And become weapons of righteousness in God's hands
अदि इबो देवुड़िया वल्लमाय नान निर्बपट्ट देवुड़िया करत्तिल नीदीन आयदंगलाय मारीरुकद इबोला देवनक शक्तिच्यत निप्पा बड़ी अवि देवनुके नीदी साधनमलोकम आत्म
Through you, through you, many are going to be delivered
उंगल मुलमागे उंगल मुलमागे पलरुम विडिविक्क पड़ा पोकडाग अन्य आयकमन मी मी मुलमुका विडिपपा बनाबोचुनाड
He's sending a mighty anointing upon you for that purpose
अंदे रोकतरकाले वर वल्लमाय अभिषयकते अवर उंगल मेलीपयदा अनुपुर आयका उद्याचन निमित्तम शक्तिमतम अभिषयकमुनु अन्य मेमीदकुमरिचबोचुनाड
Sin, Satan, so the world cannot have any more power over Your body, soul and spirit that is surrendered to God
देवनुक ओपुकरिकपड़दान उंगल आवी आत्वा सरीरतिल मेल पावमो उलगमो सात्तानो इनी मेल अदिगारम सलितम उड़याद देवनु कपकिपपा बढ़न अटुवंडी मी प्राण आत्म सरीरमलो लागमो सात्तानो यदि एलपड़चय्यद
Receive, receive that mighty anointing
अंदा वल्लमाय अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग शक्तिमतम अभिषयकमुनु अन्यर पंदुकनुड़ी
Oh, hallelujah This is the work the Lord of hosts is doing in your life
इदोदान सेनेगलिन कथ्य उंगलुड़िया वार्केल सैदुकुंडरकल क्रिय इदे साइनमलकतिपति देवड़ु नीला चैचुनाट्लुंडी कार्यम
He says, "Not by might, not by your might, not by your power, but by my spirit," said the Lord of hosts
उन्नुड़िया बलतिनाल अल्लाह, उन्नुड़िया पराक्रमतिनाल मल्लाह एनुड़िया आवीनाल एय आगुमेंदि सेनेगलिन कथ्य सुल्लुग नी शक्तिच्यतन काका, नी बलमच्यतन काका, नाह आत्मच्यतन अवुनानी साइनमलकतिपति अगवा चोर
The great mountain will become a plain before the Lord of hosts, before the Holy Spirit
सेनेगलिन कथ्युकुमुन्बागे, परिसुत्तम आवियानवरुकुमुन्बागे अंदा परिया पर्वतम समाभूमि आगु साइनमलकतिपति कुमुंदुगा, देवनुके मुंदुगा आगप्पा पर्वतमु समाभूमि आउचुनादी
That things of the world, that sin, Satan, or whatever he brings, right now is becoming a plain, it cannot have any more power over you
अंदे उलगतिन कार्यंगल, अंदे पावम, सात्तान अदा देवन कंडुवरुकद यदु आयर्दान अदि इबो दे परिया पर्वतम पर्वतम पाल यर्दादि समाभूमि आक्पट्टुकुंडरुकद अदक इनी मेल उंगल मेल अदिगारम इलाय इलावे इलाय लागमो पापमो मीला तिस्कोचुनाट्लुनास शतिरु इबो दु गप्पा दायन वच्चो देवुड़िया समाभूमिकम मच्चुकुन
You can march forward to Zion and New Jerusalem
नींगल सियानए नोकी, एरसलेमए नोकी वीरननैपोट्ट मुन्नेरी सललाव सियानु चोजी, एरसलेमुनु चोजी ओक वीरनवाला मीर मुंदुकु ताकिपो वचुन
Believe in the name of the Lord of hosts
सेनेगलिन कथ्युड़िया नामतिन मेल विश्वासम आइग साइनमलकतिपति अगवा नाम
Believe in the work of the Holy Spirit
परिसुत्तम आवियानवरुड़िया क्रिय मेल विश्वासम आइग पच्चुद आत्म क्रिय अंदे विश्वादमुंचुड़ी
That mountain is becoming a plain, receive the anointing, speak in tongues
अंदा पर्वतम समाभूमि आगिकुंडरुकद अंदा अभिषयकते पेचुकलूंग अन्य अभाशयलिल पेसुंग आयका पूमी, आयका पर्वतमु समाभूमि आयपयन अन्य मात्र शक्तिदु देवन निप्पचुनाड
Oh, hallelujah, hallelujah What is this mountain?
इंदा पर्वतम एन्न ई पर्वतम मनका एमिटी
Zerubabel was building the temple
सरुबाबेल आलयते कटिकुंडरद जरुबाबेलो कालयमुनु कटिचुनाड
And a great military power came to stop them
ओर परिया रानुव शक्ति अवरकलै तरैसैयुमुनी आय वंदद ओक साइनमेक शक्तिवानी अड्डुपच्चटानिको चियुनाद
It writes about the mountain, it says, "The margin military power"
आंगिल वेदागमतिल अंदे परिया पर्वतम एन्नदरके मार्जिनले ओरे रानुव शक्तियेंदे आयुदपट्टरुक इंग्लिशल आयका गप्पा पर्वतमुनुको अदक साइनमेक शक्तियेंनी आय बढ़ियो
Now listen, Satan may come against you So many other sins, evil spirits may come against you Now, all these hosts of the enemy, before the Lord of hosts, through the anointing, it is going to come down, it is going to be destroyed
इदे नंदाय कविनींगल सात्तान उंगलुकु विरोधमाय एरुपीवरा कुडुम पल पावंगलुम, पुल्लाद आविगलुम वर बलत्त सेनेगलिपोल उंगलुकु मुन्बा एरुपीवरा कुडुम अनाल सेनेगलिन कथ्युकुमुन्बागे, अभिषयकतिन मुलमागे अदि तार्तपड़ा पोकरद, अदि समाभूमि आक्पट्टुपोकरद लोकमेगा पापमु दानका चक्तिरुक हल्लुया गप्पा पर्वत उन्नवच्चो कानि देवनुके मुंदुगा अवन्नी समाभूमिकम मच्चपड्चु नवी
I am not saying it, thus said the Lord of hosts
नान इदे सल्लविलाय, इदे सेनेगलिन कथ्य सुल्लुग नानी मांड चप्पनादु साइनमलकतिपति अगवा मांड
He has come down, he has come down to fight for you, to give you the anointing
उंगलुकाले युद्धम सैयुमुनी आय उंगलुकाले अभिषयकते कोडुकुमुनी आय अवर इरंगिवरुकद
Ni kodukku yutam chaydhanaki, aina kuchaydhami. Ana mana machi lani kichivachu.
Receive, speak in tongues. Receive the mighty anointing.
Andha valamayana abhishekate pechukaligal, andhiya baashigalil pesi, andha valamayana abhishekate pechukaligal.
Sakthi vathaman abhishekamunna bondukarani, anni maathu maathnadi, aika sakthi nitharajayichudi.
Hallelujah. It is written, the hands of the Lord of says, the hands of Zerubabel have laid the foundation stone of this temple. He will lay the finishing stone, he will finish that work shouting, "Grace, grace unto it."
Serebabelen kaygal, indha aaliyate kastibaram potadu, avan kaygalai idai mudithu, idai mudithu thirkum, thalaykalai avan koduvanuvaan, adakka kirbey undavadaaga, kirbey undavadaaga, indha aarpani parvane katturudhe.
Dev, dev, Zerubabelake chathilok, astibaramaka raayu unnadi, aika aaliyamu kattabadu, krupakaliguru kaaka, krupakaliguru kaaka, okka aarpadu chathavina padichu, aika kattadamu kattabadu, mugipabadu.
Grace means the very favor of God which we don't deserve.
Kirbey enbadin, artham enna terima? Naam, indha devanudaya dayavukku pathiranga vangal halleyo, andha devadayave naam pechukaligame, adidaan kirbey.
Naan devanaka krupanaka, ee daitha bondukonthanakamana ayokilama, adi bondukonthanakichinatmanadi.
The word of God says, in his favor is life.
Devanudaya vaathay solugalade, avanudaya dayavu cheevanai rukalade.
Devanaka vaagam chappuchu, aina kathaya cheevamayu.
So, the grace of God is the life of Jesus is imparting into you.
Yereve devanudaya kirbeyendu solupadu, adi yesuvin cheevanaga rukalade, andha cheevanai pottu avar ungalakul, pugutikondarukal.
Devanaka krupanaka, adi yesuva ke cheevamayu, acheevamayu meemana payka etichu.
He has laid the foundation stone, he has brought in repentance, he is going to lay the finishing stone, he is going to bring you to his perfection by the grace of God.
Avare, andha aaliyati astibara kalai pottar, avare alai mudike pogalar, avare andha thalaykalai vayke pogalar, devanudaya kirbeynal, avar unnai puranathukalera, nanata pogalar.
Aina punadinai vesi unnadu, aina aika pani katti muginchu, a parvathamanuku thizkavala nilabettu, aina neelo praramichu, jayakaranaka muginchu.
When is the work going to finish?
Indha vela yappadu mudiyapogalade.
Aika pani yappudu mugipabadu.
Jesus may come at any moment now.
Yippadu, indha shanathilum, yesu vara kodum.
Ee samyamala yappadana yesu raavachu.
If you give room totally to the word of God, to the anointing, to do his will.
Nigal ungalai muchilumaaga, devanudaya vaathaykum, abhishekathukum, avade siddhantay sayuvadarkum ungalai opukunupirgalanal.
Devanaka vaagamunnu, aina chittamunnu, meere sampuunanga samarpichu.
You must surrender fully.
Nigal mulmeo, ungalai opukunuka veda.
Meere sampuunanga apakichu.
Receive the fullness of the anointing.
Avade abhishekatin, nirayvinal nilapapala veda.
Adi aika abhishekamaka sampuunaga.
Jesus comes now.
Appadu yanaal, yippadu yesu varaandra.
Appadu kaadi yippadi, aathu vachinat.
You, the Holy Spirit, not by your strength, by the grace of God, will make you perfect, you will be caught up.
Parshuddhaviyana var, ungaladaya balathinala, ungaladaya baragramatinala alla, devanudaya kirbeynal, ungalai puranapadivaa, andha kirbeynal, nigal yaridukala parveerigal.
Ni sakthi chadha, palamachadha kaadu, parshudhaatpadaara, krupachadha, meere tourupadipadururo, meere kachthamaga etipadururo.
This is the word of the Lord of hosts, receive the fullness of the anointing.
Idi dan, senegalin katturudhe vaathay, andha abhishekatin nirayvay pechukaligal.
Idai saiyanamalakathu padhigavu, aavaa vaaku, abhishekamaka ninthu.
Oh, not only the young people, all the servants of God, all the volunteers, receive the mighty anointing.
Valibergal matramalla, yella katturudhe uuliargalum, volunteer sumkuna, oru valamayana abhishekathay pechukaligal.
Devanathulu matramakaadu, devadayavakal volunteer tandanu, sakthi vathaman abhishekamaka.
The time has come, the time has come, he's going to finish his work.
Avathanudaya vela mudike pogalar, adarkana nairam, idaavandu vittadu.
Aina tanaparamakirichu.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Some, some, they don't understand about this anointing.
Silaraka, silaraka, ippidipada abhishekam illai.
They don't understand, understand.
Ippidipada abhishekathay, adunyatanme avagalu puridukaligaladu.
Ithu vandu abhishekamunnu kuchu, kontamandi arthancheskotham ledhu.
You know, Jesus said, "It is finished on the cross."
Kalvarisilvaila, yesu mudindadu endusunadu.
Adi yesu kalvarisilvala samarthamayu unnadani chappuyu.
Oh, all the stripes he bore, so deep up to his bones, still it could be seen.
Avar yechukandadana andha baradigal yellam, avarudaya yelbivarekum uduruvinadu, avarudaya yelbivagatthendadu, varaykum andha baradigalana undana khayangalirundadu.
Aika mekulani, sarinam chichinatlaite, aina kemo kalkanapada, reethika gayapachapadi.
It tore his skin, it tore his flesh, it cut his muscles to rippers.
Adi avarudaya tholai kiritadu, andha tholukkunrukalamaamsathai kiritadu, andha maamsathukunrukalatasigalai, akkumeraaga, thutthududaga, kiritadu.
Sheramam chichivathu unnadi, maamsamunnu chichivathu unnadi, aika maamsa mukkala mukkala gaapadavay.
He bore those crown of thorns.
Andha mulgrinande avasumandhar.
Aamunla giredu, aina bharichu.
His hands and feet were nailed.
Avarudaya kaygalum, kaalgalum, aanigalal, kadavapadadu.
Aika chathulu, mekulu, mekulu chathakotabadi.
All the Satan and all the demons came against Jesus on the cross.
Kalvarisilvaila tongikondarada yesuva kaviradamaga, satanum, avarudaya yella pisasugalum yelbivatanar.
Yesu kalvarlo silvala viraladichu nappudu, appavadi samathasaiyamo, adivadamaga lechivu.
Finally, they failed, Jesus overcame.
Kadaisiaga, avagal thochipoina, yesu cheetaa.
Chivalika, varandhar appadaypoddu unnaru, yathu chayichu.
Then, we crushed the head of Satan, he said, "It is finished."
Angedan, avasatanaudaya thalayai nasiki, mudindadu endusunadu.
Chivalika, sapavadaka thalichitakotti, samarthamayu unnadani paligayu.
Oh, you don't have to do anything, only believe, speak in tongues.
Nigal idarkana, one rooma sayuvanidilai, adai viswasi thalpoddum, andhiya baashigalil pesin thalpoddum.
Meere thirikorikka, aemi chaynavatunlado, vitthothindi, anni maathu lathu maathnadi.
It is finished.
Mudindadu.
Samarthamayu unnadi.
Now, when you receive the anointing.
Yippadu abhishekate pechukaligal.
Yippadu abhishekamunna bondukarani.
The crown of peace is destroying, bruising Satan and all the demons under your feet.
Indha abhishekate nigal pechukalipadu, pidavagaya devan, satanayum, avarudaya yella pisasugalyum, ungal kaalgalinkile, nasiki parugala.
Idaabhishekamana, tandriyana devu, satani, adanaka sarvathayani, ni padamakina chitukuthukuchu.
It's not difficult, believe, speak in tongues.
Idi kalidamalaade allave alla, nigal viswasiigal, andhiya baashigalai pesigal.
Avar manakunna thuvithothindi, anni maathu lathu maathnadi.
Now, the crown of peace, through the anointing, is destroying Satan and every evil spirit that's working against you, they are being bruised under your feet.
Unakaviradamay krieseida, satanayum, andha yella pisasugalyum, adida nasiki potta, samadhanathin devan, ni yippadu andhiya baashigalai pesipadu, ungal kaalgalinkile avagalai nasiki parugala.
Ni kaviradakalachinatmanu chakthiru, aina kothikinat, ipunu vandhi maathnannatlaite, samathamunu, ni padamakina aina kithukuchu.
It is finished.
Mudindadu.
Samarthamayu unnadi.
Receive the anointing.
Andha abhishekate pechukaligal.
Abhishekamunna bondukarani.
The burden of your family is troubling you.
Onudaya kudumbathay kuritha baram, unnai kalakikondarukal.
Ni kudumbamunnu kuchina baram, uninukalasanandichuchu.
But for me, your family is not my problem, you are my problem.
Anal, ennai porutamattil, onudaya kudumbamena kuprachanayala, ni daanena kuprachanay.
Kani naamattukai te, samasya, ni kudumba samasya kaadu kani, ni venakusamasya.
I have loved you so much, but you have not loved me enough.
Naan unnai, yappavoi nesithirukal, anal, niyo, ennai andhalavu kenesika illai.
Neenu ni nentakano premitchinaa kani, chaalini nentakano ni unanu premitchaledu.
I want you to make a bridal covenant with me.
Enno oru kuda, manavatiin oru udatpadikayi ni sayuvanidum endre, naan virupugalayan, edirpaarkal.
Okka, pellikkumartika, nibandana chaynimittamay korchu.
Hold my hand.
En karate, pachi pidithukol.
Naan chayini patigunavau.
Make me a promise.
Enakku oru vakurudikodu.
Okka pramanam chayivau.
Tell me that you will be faithful to me in your love for me.
En pairil unakirukal, onudaya ambil, ni enakku unmayaa irupai, endri ennai pathi ni solu.
Chimitikala mattukku, premanau, naaku namakavukaavuntari, pramanam chayivau.
When you touch my hand, I will touch your family, says the Lord.
Ni enudaya karate thodumadu, naan onudaya kudumbathay thoduvayandu kattasolugala.
Ni unanath setini patigunavau, neenu ni kudumbani patidichu.
En priyane, minnoor cheluva, en pranan endum, banjikunne, min snehatal, niranyuvaruva, en grudayam, daikunne, min snehatal, niranyuvaruva, en grudayam, daikunne, en priyane, minnoor cheluva, en pranan endum, banjikunne, min snehatal, niranyuvaruva, en grudayam, daikunne, min snehatal, niranyuvaruva.
Enchanave.
My people, my people.
Naachanama, naachanama.
Palavanayiye, enudaya kayile, nigal allaro, palath, valamay vaindha, ambugalaha rukriirgal enbadai, naan ungalakirinai podukal.
I want to remind you that all of you are mighty, powerful arrows in the hands of the mighty man, which is I.
Shakthi vathamaynoka vaktichathilo, mirandaru, balamayna bhaanamulukaavunnaanani, nikunnapagam chichunadu.
Ini, ningal sadhana nabar alla.
You are no more than ordinary person.
Miru sadharamen vaktirukkaadu.
Enudaya kayile rukkarapalath ambuha.
You are strong arrows in my hands.
Naachathilo, ni, balamayna bhaanamulau.
Indha viswasa thodari po.
Go with this fate.
Ee viswasa muta vellemau.
Indha bela thodari po.
Go with this thy might.
Ee palamutu vellemau.
Idu varayu poradira, andha valamaygalai, niri kadaave vattai.
You will not see those powers that were serving against you anymore.
Ni to korodanakakthilo, ikkamidadana ni vutsoodanerevau.
Avagal ellavatayum, naan un padakalaki kilakivitthe.
I have subdued all those powers under your feet.
Vatini, ni padamalako lobachu.
Ni yelbiv pravasiyendu kattasolugala.
Arise and shine, says the Lord.
Lemmu, prakoshichu mari devachupuchu.
Many spiritual military powers are standing before the church of God.
Devanudaya sabaykavunbaga, palav, avikuriy, ranuvangal ninthukondarukal.
Devanisangamayudutda, palu saiyanika shathul nilamadu.
They are standing like big mountains before the church of God.
Devanudaya sabaykaidilaga, periyaparvathangalipala avagal ninthukondarukal.
Devanisangamayudutda, parvathamala nilamadu.
But God has formed another military power in high places.
Anal, uyantha inangalil, meru na ranuvasakthiay, devan kandupidithu.
Unnata staramalalo, bera ka saiyanamudu devu.
You don't have to go around the mountain or through the mountain, you have to go to the mountain and it will collapse before you.
Ni andha malayai suttipogavendi avasya millai, ala andha malayai uduruvikalathipogavendi avasya millai, ni andha malayai nokki sentukandairi, unakku unbaga, adi idindu vilum samabumiago.
Aa kondakuchuttu velavatu, aakondaloni kavelavatu, ni velte chaalau, adi samabumiga maranau.
He that is in you is greater than the mountain.
Andha malayai parkilum, unakulirukalavar, periyavar.
Ash kondakante, ni na unavadu, kappavadu.
Amen. Now, we are going to pray for a few things.
Yippadu silakariyangelaka, nam jebike pogur.
Konni kariyala korukku pradhinsabothu.
You can sit down now.
Yippadu ningal ukkarala.
Miru kuchavachu.
But when we say, "Let us pray," if possible, try to stand on your knees.
Anal, jebipoom endusolupadu, ungalakoodumanaal, murangali nirka prayasapal.
Pradhinsathaman chappina, pudu veelaithiramokarichu.
Physically, you may be tired.
Sarinapragaramaga ningal kalaitupoyirukala.
Sarinamul alsi poyindavachu.
But that mighty anointing inside you can quicken your outside also.
Anal, ungalukulirukal andha valamayana abhishekam, ungaladaya puramana sarinatiyamuirpikum.
Mi lo ni abhishekamu, bakhiamayana sarinamunnu kura chhipachino.
This is our warfare, standing on our knees and praying.
Murangali ninthu jebipadu enbadu, namudi yutathin oru kalayai rukal.
Mokarichu pradhinsutha, yudhanai punyamayu.
Every word you pronounce in prayer, they are going to be like mighty arrows.
Ningal jabathil uchcharikabogala, boboru jabavarthayum, oru sakthi vayinda ambayipala purapadapogal.
Pradhinalo ni okkaka motta, okka sakthi vathamana bhaanamuntudi.
When we say, "Let us pray,"
Jebipoom endusunabirpa.
Pradhinsuchincha.
Stand on your knees and like a soldier, lift up your voice and pray.
Ningal murangali nirpa matramalla, oru por veeranai pala, veeranganai pala, satade uyathichabingal.
Mokarichu matramaka kaaka, okka veera manitavale, veerunivale, miru pradhinsali.
Remember, you have the license from the government of heaven to kneel down before the throne of God and pray.
Devanudaya singasunathukavunbaga, murangal padiruvadarkum, jebipadarkum, paraloga arasangatina mirundu, ungalakke anumadi license kradirukalade, yepade naba gavaitukaligal.
Devanisimasunamidutdayu, miru mokarchudugunu, pradhinsudugunu, paraloka pramuthamiku anumati chinyu.
First of all, we are going to pray for all our youngsters.
Mudilavu namudi valibergalallarukagum, nam jebike.
Konni kemasulakorikku pradhinsabothu.
Many have not come to this camp.
Palarumindha mugamukku varaillai.
Anekulai campukuraledu.
Some, because they don't want to come.
Silar varaadadukka karanam, avargalakka vara virupamillai.
Varu raakoraledu kani, ravaladu.
The world has swallowed many of them.
Ulagam, avargalipalayum viringibittadu.
Lokam varunimigibasayu.
Some are convinced that all this is wrong, is all foolishness.
Silar, idellantappu, idellapaitheykarathano, abdin urudiyanampraga.
Kontamandiite, idantathappu, idipichitharamani, stiramugana amuchunaru.
Many, many youngsters are inside part of us, but they are struggling with sin.
Palapalavali vergal ulayirukalargal, namudi mattilanirukalargal, analavagal paavathodu poradikondarukal.
Halu yavastulamanamadilavunaru, loonavunaru kani, papamutu poradichunaru.
Many are confused about their future.
Palarum tangaludaya edirgalate kurithu, kulappamana manalayilirukalargal.
Paluvaraithey tamika abhishattunukuchu, gandaragolangaavunaru.
But God has anointed you now.
Anal, yippadu devan ungalai abhishekathirukal.
Yippuddevan abhishekam chinyu.
The Holy Spirit inside you is going to teach you to pray.
Ungalukulirukal parshuddhaviyana var, ungalakke jebipadarku kachukadukapogala.
Mi lo ni parshuddhaatmadu pradhinsudamiku neerpunu.
All you have to do is open your mouth, the Holy Spirit will fill it.
Ningal sayuvanidilam, ungal vaayathirakavendum, parshuddhaviyana varidhi nirapuva.
Miru chayvalchintayu, nor thiraste, athmadu unimpunu.
Shall we pray for all our youngsters?
Namudi valibergalallarukagum, nam jebipo.
Mana yavalarikorikku pradhindama?
Let us pray.
Nam jebipo.
Pradhinsudamu.
God of mercy, Lord, you may, we pray for all our youngsters, mercy of the Bog, God, you need you, we all want you, you are our strength, Lord, you are our strength, Lord, O may, kirbeytha, avale balapaduthum andhavare, yesuva, kalanatrayangel melvarakamay, illumayaa. Amen. Having thousands of people praying together in one place is a big power for us.
Airekana kaana chenangal, ippidi oru idathil kulumi jebipadu, adive namathu, migaperyavare sakthiaga.
Veelakolathi mandi, okka staramulokkudi pradhinsutha, mikkili sakthi vantamo.
We want to use you in this warfare.
Indha yutathil, ungalai payanmadhikolena, naangal virupugal.
Ee yudamulo, mimunna proyojana pachukavala.
You are a good soldier of Christ, chosen for his army.
Ningal Kristvin senayaka, terindadukapatta, oru nalapochavagana rukirigal.
Kristiaka saiyanamukorikku ennukovadinu, manchi, itosainikalu.
When you pray in Jesus' name and by the power of the anointing, God is going to do great things amongst our youngsters.
Yesuvin namathinalam, parshuddhavin valamayakondam, nigal jebikipadu, devanamudi valibergalmatile, periyakariyakaliseepogala.
Yesu namumulau, abhishekamunnu pradhinsaga, yavastulamatalo kappakarimul chayuno.
Two more minutes, pray loudly.
Yirendanibinangal kuda, jabingal, shaddamay jabingal.
Ikka karindanam shala pradhida.
Ah, turubetan, anubalale porukoruk, turuborubale karathulai thirani, nanatumapa, ee, tumbebe thulagakura, parshuddhatil nanatum kathukalumaapa, nikadushene maathu midir kalaate pati onichayate kodumandhavare, yesuva, bava kattugalalirudhu midutala, itaarumapa. Amen. You heard about one FAQ, how one person said, "Why do you have to invest so much of money on all these youngsters? Anyway, they are going to go back to sin, better you spend some money on the poor."
Adikidi kertikapadumandakelviga, FAQ la, oruvar ketta kelvi, ningal netseki kelvi pottirigal, oru nabaripidi edidirindar, evalkalilara marbudimay, ulakathukupai, paavathukadan, pogapogalargal, yen, ivlav prayasathayum, ivlav, selavayum, evalkalakai panna vendum, adakkupadilaaga, deyaregalakku kodukalamay.
Tarchu kaadige, okka prashnale, okka javabala, okka karekramulolo, okka vekthadikinadi prashneamatante, intati, dabul mirundu kachupetali, tirigiveeru papamuloni kada velthunaru, ee dabunu, bidalaki vachukadu.
These young boys and girls may be dry bones, but they have a God who raises the dead.
Indha valibasagodarasagodirigal, oru vela ularunda yelbivagala irukal, anal, evalkalakku oru devan irukal, avar marithaale wirpikal.
Ee yavastulu, endina yavukalavale vachuni kani, veeriloh chimitchu, okka devu, chimugala devu.
He's listening to every word that you are praying.
Ningal jebikina oboru vaarthayum, avar koordhuganidukadukal.
Miru pradhinsuprati mautanu, chakkagavichunadu.
At the right time, the answer is coming.
Sariyana narakil, badil vandukondarukal.
Sariyana samyamulolo javabu vachunu.
At the right time, believe, you are going to rise up as a mighty army.
Sariyana narakil, ningal oru balathasenayaga, yelbivirukapogirigal enbadai, viswasiigal.
Sariyana samyamulolo, manchi, saiyanamuka, leavutunaru, napagamuchu.
All your confusion is going to be cleared.
Ungaladaya kulappangalallam, thira pogaladu.
Mi gandaragolamu thissuvaibadu.
All those youngsters who have gone into backsliding will come back to Jesus.
Pinmatsadukul poyirukal, valibergalallarum, yesuvaraiketiribivara.
Venikavari poyira yavastulu, yesuva kavachudu.
They shall know the truth, and the truth will set them free.
Avagal satyate erivagal, satyamagala, virdala.
Satyamu yaregadu, satyam virdala chayuno.
If you believe this, praise God.
Idai ningal viswasi thalkathare stotripa.
Namutia stotrichudamu.
Stotram, 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 stotram. Amen. Listen, praying in your tiredness gives extra power.
Gavningal, ungaladaya kalipin mattil ningal jebipadu, koordhalana valamayay undabodukal.
Kamanchudhi, alashtaramatilo pradhinsutha, adika balamichu.
Because there's a sacrifice in that prayer, it holds extra honor before God.
Yenandali ippidipada jabathil oru thiyagam oru baliirukrapidi, devanukumunbaga, adu koordhalana ganathay parugal.
Endukanaka, itti, pradhinalo thiyagamunnu varana, devanayadutada adika ghana mukaligunu.
So, it is good that you are tired, because when you pray in your tiredness, when you are weak, then you are strong.
Ningal kalaitupoyirukaladu naladu, yenendusunadu, ningal ungaladaya kalipin mattil jebikipadu, ningal belaminama irukipadu, adiga belamulagala irukirigal.
Miru alashtipoyinadu, manchudai, endukanaka, mi alashtaramatilo, balaginatamatilo, miru atyadika balamichu.
Now, we are going to pray for the second point.
Yippadu irandavadu vishyathika, nam jebike.
Rendavamshamo. We are going to pray for four spirits that our youngsters are struggling with.
Namudi valibergal, poradi thadumari kondarukal, nang, avigalakke virodamaga, nam jebike.
Yavastulato poraduchu, variditaadabadichuchinandhi, nalugu atmalu.
One is the spirit of sickness.
Undre vyadiin avi.
Okati vyadi.
Young yet sick.
Valibergal, analu vyadiya irukal.
Yavastulay, kani vyadigastulu.
Two, the spirit of depression.
Irandavadu, mana azutthatin avi.
Manasulokkrungipoyi atma.
Loneliness, frustration, suicidal feelings.
Tanimay unarv, virakti, tharkolay enngal.
Ekantamu, virakti, atmathia prayer epana.
Three, the spirit of lustful secret sins.
Moonravadu, ichigalana nerambina ragasya pavangalinaavi.
Moodaba, moodakarimu, ichalato prayeripibadu rasya papamulu.
Four, the spirit of materialism, always focusing only on earthly things.
Nangaavadu, porul mudalvadatin avi, adavadu yappadume, bhoomikuriyakariyangelamela, ee, gavunam shalathavai.
Vashtuvarake, pramukke thichetandhi, buhsamadameen atma.
You don't have to pray for one hour.
Ni oru mani nara, idakaka jebike.
Okka kantase pradhinakarledhu.
Two or three minutes you pray powerfully, that great God in you will answer your prayer.
Rendumundi nimitangal, valamayai jabingal, ungalukulirukalana, periyadevan ungaladaya jabathikabadil.
Rendumundi shala pradhistecharunu, mi lo ni kappadevudu javabichu.
Soldiers of God's army, let us pray.
Devanudaya senayin veeragala, nam jebipo.
Devanisaiyamaka veerulara, pradhichudi.
Ah, turubetan, anubalale porukoruk, turuborubale karathulai thirani, nanatumapa, ee, tumbebe thulagakura, parshuddhatil nanatum kathukalumaapa, nikadushene maathu midir kalaate pati onichayate kodumandhavare, yesuva, bava kattugalalirudhu midutala, itaarumapa. In Jesus' name, who said it is finished, oh, Jesus. Jesus, 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 Jesus. How many of you believe that when Jesus said, "It is finished," these spirits were finished?
Mudindadu endi yesu sunabadu, indha avigaladaya kadai mudindadu, endi adaname viswasiigal.
Yesu samarthamichapaka, ee atmalu kura samarthamaynari, endukandilamuchunaru.
Those spirits were disturbing you, now you are on your knees praying, those spirits are getting disturbed now.
Idu varaykum, andha avigal ungalai kalakikondarukal, yippadu ningal murangalpariti jebikipadu, andha avigal kalakikondarukal.
Ee atmalu, mimunna petarapachinavi, ipudumiru pradhinsaga, ee atmalu, miru todharachichunaru.
Not because you are powerful, but because your Jesus is powerful.
Ningal edho, shaktiavaidhavanabari, entpadinaal, allah, ungal yesu valamayulava, adinallavi gal, narukagare.
Meero balamaladu, yesu lo, shaktiavandhikabatti, abipari pochunavi.
Since the judgment sentence has already been administered.
Dandanayin, anda, saasanam, yerkaramay, shalathabadabudinaal.
Thirpusasanaamu, rikkepavadindhvarana.
We are going to execute that judgment now.
Namipparu, adai, anda avi galimel, shalathabogurum.
Darani, ippudu, amalu chayvachunam.
We are going to offer high praises to God.
Nam devanukke, uyarnathudigale, yaridukabogurum.
Chagasstotramuchayvachunam.
This honor has all, have all his saints.
Indagam, avuridhi parshutavangal, yavirukumundagum.
Idyagana, aina parshutalanirikichundinadi.
Being washed by the blood of Jesus, being sanctified by the Holy Ghost, you are those saints.
Yesuvin nadathinalam, kalugapadirukkare, parshutavinalam, parshutavakapadirukkare, ningal dalanta, parshutavangal.
Yesu rakthamtho, kalugamadi, abhishekipadiala, meere, abhashudalu.
A little while ago, you heard, that the members of our body are weapons of righteousness.
Sachnayathikumunbaha, ningal kelyvipattirigal, namudhe sarirathinavayavangal, needhin, ayyadangala irukkare.
Kodisepundigavani, neenamu, mana sariravayavule, ayydamalu.
That means standing on your knees is a weapon.
Adavadu, ningal mulangali, nilpadu, oru ayyam.
Mookarinchutada, ayyam.
When you lift up your hands and praise God, that is a weapon.
Ningal kaigale, uyathidhi devane, thudigibbaadi, oru ayyam.
Chaytilathutada, oru ayyamu.
When you open your mouth and say, "Praise the Lord", that's a weapon.
Ningal vaayathirandhi, stotram, kattarakishtotram, entisalabodu, aduvaru, ayyam.
Stotrichudavaka, ayyamu.
Execute upon these spirits, the judgment written by God, and offer high praises to God.
Devanindavagamel, yaridina, nyaythirpai, anda avi galimel, shalathi, devanukke, uyarnathudigale, yaridupo.
Nyaythirpu, namalu chasi, stotrichudhamma.
Praise the Lord, praise you, Lord, praise you, Lord. Praise you, 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 praise you. Praise you, praise, praise you, praise you, praise you, Lord, we praise you, Lord, praise you, we praise, praise you, praise you, praise you, praise you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus, praise you, Lord, praise you, Lord, praise you, praise you, we praise you. Few more seconds, praise God.
Innum sillabinanigal, kattare, thudigundirigal.
Innukonexchanal, stotrichudi.
Praise you, Lord, praise you, Lord, praise you, Lord, praise you. Thank you, Jesus, praise you, Lord, praise you, Jesus, we praise you, Jesus. Praise you, Lord, we praise you, Jesus, we praise you, Jesus, praise you, Jesus. Amen. Third prayer point.
Mundraavadu jaba kureepa.
Mudavamshamo. Three people saw, three different visions.
Mundu pey, mundu vityasamana, vevair, darishunangalai, palthargal.
Muguru, moodu vityasamay, darshanachuchinadu.
During the children's convention, one sister, who was sleeping here in this Irumblyur hall, saw in a dream, that a, an evil spirit, that was half-human, but had the head of a calf, was pregnant and troubling the children.
Inday Children's Convention, Irumblyur, nadebitukundirundhasamayathil, indahauli, nitrisidukundirundhadaana, oru sagodiri, oru, soppanathay kandargal, adilai, oru, pollanava, aviavargal kandargal, adinudhi, udalin, padi, pagri, manidavudala irundhadi, ananaladinudhi, mugamo, oru, kalein mugamay irundhadi, kandukuttiin mugamay irundhadi, ah.
Was troubling the children.
Adi, pillagalai, kalakikundirundhadi.
Silan convention samayamalu, okasagodarikani, nitrapochundenu, amachuchinakala, ayakalalo, okka, manava akaramu, kani, thala, okayedu thala, amay, garbavatigavundenu, pillalalu, thondarachichundenu.
Another person saw a huge serpent, and those who were praying, stepped on the serpent, it was forced to open its mouth helplessly, but it was also pregnant.
Adutthi, oru, oru, sarpaththi, palthargal, jebithukundirundhasillar, anda sarpathtrudhi, vaayapriyae, midik.
The body, but.
Sarpathtrudhi, sarirathibriyamidikirargal, adu udaviyatsa, tanmay, tanmay, apriyathanudhi, vaayapilakare, adu, anal, adunkuda, garbamayirundhada, kaga, anda darishunathil, vargal palthargal.
Ayakadarshanamalu, okasarpamu, kontamandiprathitsuchunaru, varuprathitsuvadu, anikasariranthokuchunaru, kani, nissahayamukadi, nor thirtuchuchunadi, adikuda, garbavatigavunadi, adi, ithalathondarachichunadi.
Thirdly, a senior servant of God, saw in a vision, how from behind Irumblyur, a wolf clothed in sheep's clothing, is coming towards Irumblyur, it is also pregnant.
Mundraavadu, oru, moottha, kathudiyay, udiyakar, avargalum, tangelidhi, darishunathil, palthavu, oru kariyam, entvandusannal, Irumblyur, valagathin, pinbogathirundhi, aattuttholai, porthyadana, oru, onay, adu, oru, pollanava, avi, adu, garbamayirundhadi, adu, indavalaathen, okivargar.
Okka, petta, dayvasavakuluchuchinadu, darshanamu, ekay, Irumblyur, venikabagamalu, okathodeelu, kani, goracharmani, kapukunadi, adikuda, garbavamukavunadi, adi, kuda, thondarachichunadi.
This pregnancy shows the hatching of an evil plan.
Indavagamayirupadi, entvadu, oru, timayana, thittam, magukkapattukundirukkare, entvadai, kattagare.
Garbavamukavunudha, okka, dusta, pannaagamunu, varu, rachinchutadu, chupuchunadi.
These evil spirits should not give birth to these plans.
Indavallanava, avi gal, indathittathay, pirapikakoodaadi.
Idustashaktalu, dusta, pannaagamalu, pannaakooda.
All the soldiers of God's church stand on your knees.
Devanidhi sabayin, phorviragala, anevaram, mulangali, nilngal.
Dayvasangamayekap, raavam, sainyikalu, mookarinchudi.
I write unto you, young people, because you are strong, and you have overcome the wicked one.
Valibergale, ningal, balavankala, irupadinaalum, ningal, pollanavangalai, chaitirukkabudinaalum, nanungal, kerdugare.
Yavunalar, meerupalavantalu, dustuni, chichunaru, kabuna, meerupayichunadu.
Use your weapon now, open your mouth wide and pray.
Ipparu, ungalidhi, yutta, ayyadhte, payanmadhingal, vaayavirivaythirandhi, jebingal.
Yudda, idamuru, payagachi, noru, bhakadachi, prathitsudi.
Those spirits should not touch any one of us.
Andavagal, namil, oruvarim, thodaakoodaadi.
Atmalu, eyadiyu, muttakooda.
It should die, its baby should die.
Adis, saga vendum, adinudhi, pillayum, saga vendum.
Adiyu, daanipidayu, thani povele.
Let us pray.
Nam jebipo.
Prathitsudhamma.
Hiraama, shalama, hanka, rava, hasya. Turbatar, pala, turbatar, yesuve, veertharudhi, yesuvin naamathil, ellavatram, jitha, yesuvin naamathil, punindadu, entresanna, yesuvin naamathil, thuraitthanangalai, madigaramgali, urindukonda, yesuvin naamathil, velirangamana, kolamakkuna, yesuvin naamathil, silvail, vetrisiranda, yesuvin naamathil. Destroy. Hiraamaka, rasha, parrama, simba, lama, kathinma. Pa, pa. While you are praying.
Ningal jebikumbaadi.
Meeruprathitsundagani.
You must also bind the devil in Jesus' name.
Yesuvin naamathil, ningal pisasai, kattiyum, jebikavendu.
Yesu naamamalu, apavadini, banditsi, prathitsali.
Don't just say, "Lord, preservers", you must say that also, but in the middle, get the fullness of the anointing, and, and rebuke and destroy that devil in Jesus' name.
Andavare, engle, kapachum, engle, kapachum, entmaathram, solikundirukkakoodaadi, adiyum, solavendum, anal, anda jabetinadumine, ningal, anda, nirivana, abhisheka, de, petti, yesuvin naamathine, anda aviay, kattigal, anda aviay, adatigal.
Yesu, ya, kapadani, kapadani, chavagaga, nindai, abhisheka, mutto, atmalu, banditsudi.
God has given you that authority.
Devanada, adigaratte, ungalidhi, kundirukkala.
Adikaramachinadu.
The name of our Lord, Jesus. The Lord is my light and my salvation, whom shall I fear?
Kattaryan, velichamum, entracipumanavar, yarukke, bayaapaduva.
Eho, vana, velugunu, rakshanyu, nair, yavarki, bayaapadudunu.
The Lord is the strength of my life, of whom shall I be afraid?
Kattaryan, chiva, nin, belanava, yarukke, anjuvay.
Aynanak, chiyumeka, balamu, yavarki, bedududunu.
When the wicked, even my enemies and my foes, came upon me to eat up my flesh, they stumbled and fell.
En, satturukalum, entpagangirum, agya, vargal, vargal, maamsathai, bachikavandabodi, avargale, idari, virudargal.
Naaskal, maamsamal, thirunimitamai, vachusatturalu, varay, kooluduru.
The eternal God is my refuge, and underneath are the everlasting arms, and he shall thrust out the enemy from before me, and shall say, "Destroy them."
Anal, idevanay, enakalakam, avuridhi, nitthiya, puyagala, enakal, aadaram, aver, yenakku, munindri, satturukalai, thurathi, avargale, adithupori, entikatrayiduva.
Shashvatudhaidhi devu, nakasravu, aynanikthi, bhagune, adaramu, varu, niruvanam, chayvalchupuchunadu.
Now shall my head be lifted up above my enemies round about me.
Ipparu, antalay, enesuchilubunukkare, satturukalikamela, uyarta padu.
Ipputu, chuttu, satturuchuttuka, nakatalay, athabadu.
Now will I offer these tabernacle sacrifices of joy.
Adinibittam, ipparu, nanavuridhi, koodaalathri, ananda, baligragittu, kattare, bariavare, keethanamaduva.
A godaramalu, ananda, gamto, keethalu, chaydunu.
It is finished.
Mudindadu.
Sameaptam.
These spirits are finished.
Indavagal, mudindadu.
Idyatmalakata, samaaptam.
In Jesus' name, finished.
Yesuvin naamathine, mudindadu.
Yesu naamamalasamaaptam.
Amen. One, one brother said.
Oru sagodarinasannal.
Okasagodarichepin.
Brother, if you fight like this, all those spirits will pounce on you.
Brother, ningal, ibnilam, poradna, anda avi galal, ungalimel, paindivaru.
Brother, ividanga, kotlarthe, atmalu, mimidhathumukuthai.
I told him, Saint Paul wrote fourteen epistles in the Bible, which has been changing so many people, all the spirits should have pounced on him, but what did he say? "I have finished my course, I have kept the faith, henceforth is laid up for me a crown of righteousness."
Andavagandhati, nan, ennesonnain, terima? Parshutapaul, vedathilirukkara, padinang, nirubangalai, edhirukkara, adi, yatrinyo, peridhi, chivangalai, machikundayirukkare, anda avi galal, amavaram, paindhirukkumdanai, anal, paul, ennesonukkara, nalaparathate, pharani, viswastate, kathukandai, enhotate, mudindai, idumudal, needhin, krilam, yenakai, vaykabadirukkare.
Ayakasagodaridhi, entchepinadante, paulu, padnalka, patrikal, rasinadu, anni, entomadu, machichunadi, enno, shaktalu, arum, dukinavi, kani, thar, chepinadu, naikapachiparath, paraththari, vota, parik, mugichuchichunadu.
For the victory, God has given us, let us praise God.
Devanamakukundirukkare, chaitukai, nam, kattare, istotramadu.
Devu chinchayukurukku, stotrichudhamma.
Stotram, 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 stotram. We will pray for two more points.
Innum irandavishyengal, kaga, nam jebipo.
Ikogarandamamshamalu.
Strengthen your feeble knees.
Thalarindha, ungal mulangalgalai, balapadithigal.
Balaginam, okal, balapatsudi.
We are going to pray for all servants of God all over the world.
Mulu, ulakathilubunukkara, yelao, kathudiyay, uliyargalakaga, nam jebikabogurum.
Sarvalokamunan, sevakalukurukku, prathinsabothunam.
All our fathoms should become houses of prayer.
Namudhi, yelao, viswasa, vedigalum, jaba vedigala, imaranvendu.
Viswasa, kuramalu, prathinayilukamaraali.
All our servants of God should become mighty men of valor.
Namudhi, kathudiyay, uliyargalai, yelao, parakramasaligala, imaranvendu.
Sevakaluk, parakramashalulukamaraali.
None of them should fall sick.
Yarum vyadi padakoodaadi.
Yavaru vyadi padakooda.
None of them should lose their heavenly vision.
Yarum, tangelidhi, paraloga, darishunathai, irundhipogave, koodaadi.
Paraloga, darshanani, yavu, poguttukukooda.
For what reason did they leave all and follow him? It is to love Jesus, till the end, they should be filled with the love of Jesus.
Yen devan, edavachim, verithu, vitu, vitu, avargale, tamay, pinbatchumadi, sunnar, adu, avargala, vari, neshikavendum, entvadarkagave, yenave, tangelidhi, kadaisi, moochimadum, avargal, yesuvin, anbinal, nirappadirukkavendu.
Aynamathrami, premitchunamitamai, samastamunadilipitamani, chepinadu, chivavarku, aynne, premitchali.
Do you love us? Do you love us?
Ningaligalai, neshikirigala.
Meerumunapremistunara.
Then pray for us.
Apadi, anal, engle, kaga, jebingal.
Maakurukku, prathitsudi.
God will listen to your prayer and protect us.
Devan, ungalidhi, jabetike, engle, padi gappo.
Meeprathinala, ketchi, muna, kapadu.
For the protection of, for protection of all the servants of God, let us pray.
Devanidhi, uliyargal, anevaridhi, padi gappuka, kaga, nam, jebipo.
Sevakalai, kapudala, kurukku, prathitsudhamma.
Andore, virangumayaa, thigari, pirappa. The Lord, protect them all, preserve them all, protect them all, mercy, Jesus. The Lord, stirapadu. Yesuve, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. Pa, pa, mercy, Jesus, Jesus, protect Lord, padi gappavendu, papa. Uliyargalai, nir, padi gappavendu, stirapaduthu, munadamana, varu, stirapaduthu. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus, thank you. Singathin melum nadandhi, valasarpathayum midipaa. Ava naamathai, ni, mothum nambinada, unne vidhunithu, kathiduva. Ava naamathai, ni, mothum nambinada, unne vidhunithu, kathiduva. Ava sentai, ki, adakalapugavi, kam, siragugala, mooduva. 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 Riba, 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 riba. Amen. You are going to sing this again to us.
Ningal ipparu, engle, pate, idai, marubidipada, pogurigal.
Ippudu, manimitam, ikka, pathanu, maralap, pada, bochunaru.
You must sing and encourage us.
Ningal, padi, engle, daiyapadavendu.
Meeri, pathanu, padi, mamunu, daiyapachandi.
We will sing and stop, you should continue.
Naga, idha, pate, thuvangi, niruthividuva, ningal, thodandipada.
Ippathanu, padi, vipararminchudhamma, konasaginchi, pathanu, meeri, paddandi.
Singathin melum nadandhi. Amen. God is zealous about his servants.
Devan, tamudhi, uliyargal, peyil, vairankhimkundirukkara.
Devu, thana, sevakalukurichentu, atya, shaktikalike, unadu.
The highest himself shall establish them.
Unnedamana, vadaave, ungal, stirapaduthuva.
Unnedamayna, devan, dani, siraparachunu.
He heard your prayer, he heard your song, he is going to establish them, praise God.
Avar, ungalidhi, jabetike, dhrukkara, avar, ungalidhi, paderin, sattathim, kettirukkara, avare, avargal, stirapaduthavogurum, yenave, nam, devan, istotramadu.
Meeprathinashattamunay, vinayunadu, meepadala, shattamunay, vinayunadu, andukaraka, varandani, devanai, stirapachabothunadu, andukaraka, devanai, istotrichudhamma.
Stotram, 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 stotram. Thank you, Jesus, 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 thank you. Amen. One last point we are going to pray for.
Kalasya, oru, koreepuka, kaga, nam, jebikabogurum.
Chivani, ka, amishamukurukku, manam, prathichukchunam.
We are going to pray for India.
India, vaka, kaga, nam, jebikabogurum.
Bhartadeshamukurukku, ipparu, prathichukchunam.
India is in a kind of spiritual danger.
India, oru, venumana, avi, kuriyay, abayakattathukulirukkare.
Bhartadeshamanadi, ipparu, ok, atmay, ok, apaimalu, okanabadichunadi.
Till Jesus comes, we must have our freedom to worship, and spread the name of Jesus everywhere.
Yesuvin varugai, varikum, nam, aaradikaradarkana, suyadinathai, petchirukavendum, yesuvin naamathai, engkum, parappakudiyasuyadinathai, petchirukavendum.
Raakadavarku, manan, devanay, aaradinchudhakani, manan, kusvatantram, kalavakalagali, raakadukumundu, varaku, sarvalokamantha, devanukusuvathan, pakatinchudhakani, manan, kusvatantramu, kavali.
No plan of the devil to destroy this country should prosper.
Indadeshathai, aligumadi, ai, thita, badugala, yenda, satturuvin, thittamum, vaykakooda.
Idesham, naasranchaita, anikati, vanti, satanaka, alochalunu, neravachamada, kooda.
Nobody else can stop this, stop this attack of the devil.
Indapisasin, takudalai, taduthi, nirutha, varu, yaralamudiyadu.
Apavadaka, shaktalani, yavargu, attakinchunadi, yavargu, vallakadu.
But if you pray, your God can stop it.
Anal, ningal, jebithal, ungalidhi, devanala, idhathukamudiyu.
Meeruprathitsunatlaite, nee devan, vallak, dani, attakinchakaladu.
All the soldiers once again be on your knees.
All the soldiers once again be on your knees.
All the soldiers once again be on your knees.
That the Lord might preserve our country. Let us pray.
Let us pray.
Let us pray.
In Jesus' name, bind those powers.
In Jesus' name.
Use your heavenly license.
Use your heavenly license.
Use your heavenly license.
Amen. Will those thousands and thousands of spirits pounce on you because you prayed like this?
We have prayed like this.
We have prayed like this.
Our fear is not about the thousands of spirits that are around us.
We have prayed like this.
We have prayed like this.
Our confidence and our faith is on that one man who hung on the cross and said, "It is finished."
We have prayed like this. We have prayed like this.
We have prayed like this.
I am singing in the rain. I am singing in the rain. My heart is crying. I am singing in the rain. My heart is crying. Singing on the roof of the mountain. 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 Singing on the roof of the mountain.
Amen. There is one beautiful promise. Now you can stand. You can stand for the last few minutes. Please stand. But don't go out.
We will pray for two more points.
We will pray for two more points.
There is a beautiful word that Jesus, our Lord, said.
He said that.
He said that.
Yes, he gives you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
As long as you keep a sincere heart, cleanse every day, then he promises you...
He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
He who said, "It is finished," and he who arose victoriously saying, "All power is given to me in heaven and on earth."
He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons. He gave you authority to overall Satan and all the demons.
It is written, Jesus said, "Behold, I give unto you power to tread on serpents and scorpions and over all the power of the enemy, and nothing shall by enemies hurt you."
He said that. He said that. He said that. He said that. He said that.
He said that. He said that. He said that.
Through the name of Jesus, we will tread them under, and nothing shall by enemies hurt us. Shall we praise God?
He said that. He said that. He said that.
He said that. He said that. He said that.
We thank you, Jesus. We praise you, Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
I heard some of the young people singing. At least two groups before coming, I could hear. They sang, "Our God is an awesome God."
I heard that. I heard that. I heard that.
I heard that. I heard that.
He reigns.
He reigns.
He reigns.
Truly, the things he has done for us today, until this last few moments of this day, it is nothing ordinary. All the three days, especially today, it is awesome. He is the awesome God. He reigns. Shall we praise him?
We will pray for two more points. 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 We will pray for two more points.
We will pray for two more points. We will pray for two more points. We will pray for two more points.
Give him the praise. He is worthy of all praise. The Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Let's praise him.
We will pray for two more points. We will pray for two more points.
We will pray for two more points.
Hallelujah, Father God. Lord Jesus. Oh, God, Holy Spirit. We give you all the glory. We give you all the praise. We give you all the honor. Hallelujah. Now, even tonight, the Lord tarries. The Lord may give us a glorious meeting in the morning.
We will pray for two more points.
We will pray for two more points.
Coming, the entire gathering here and all the gathering of the saints into his mighty hands. Shall we praise God?
We will pray for two more points. We will pray for two more points.
We will pray for two more points. We will pray for two more points.
Hallelujah, we thank you, Lord, our righteous. Because all this burden about you. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Let us pray.
We will pray for two more points. 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 We will pray for two more points.[1675.92][1676.00][S02. We will pray for two more points. 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 We will pray for two more points.[1698.64][1698.72][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1700.96][1701.04][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1703.92][1704.00][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1709.36][1709.44][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1712.72][1712.80][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1716.96][1717.04][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1720.88][1720.96][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1724.80][1724.88][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1729.84][1729.92][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1734.96][1735.04][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1739.28][1739.36][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1743.36][1743.44][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1747.36][1747.44][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1752.48][1752.56][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1756.80][1756.88][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1759.60][1759.68][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1763.20][1763.28][S02. We will pray for two more points.[1765.44][1765.52][S02. We will pray for two more points.
Amen. Now, may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, the Father, and the sweet communion of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with each and every one of us until Jesus appears in all his glory. Amen.